It's a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available in the file pocket near the entrance or on the city of Waterville's website. All items appearing on the consent agenda are voted, are routine in nature and voted on in one motion and vote. All items listed under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. Any agenda item, on any agenda item, all councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, then staff or citizens will be given an opportunity for comments or questions. Speakers must identify themselves at the podium, and each citizen will be allowed one opportunity to speak and will be limited to three minutes. Finally, councillors will be given another opportunity to speak or comment. Anyone who would like to talk about something that isn't on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda. Pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is that we are the states of America and to the vote for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Disclosure conflict of interest? Anyone? Seeing none, we're going to move on to proclamations. We've got a couple. Whereas the National Federation of State High School Association Performing Arts Schools of Excellence Award is given in recognition of its exemplary commitment to the performing arts, and whereas this award is presented each year in October to celebrate National High School Activities Month and National Performing Arts Activities Week to remind students, parents, coaches, administrators, and others in communities across the country about the values and benefits of high school activity programs, and whereas Waterville Senior High School has been selected as the 2023 NFHS Performing Arts School of Excellence Award, which makes them the eighth school in the United States to be recognized since its inception in 2016, and whereas the school's visual and performing arts department has been instrumental in cultivating the passion and skill level of its students, as evidenced by their outstanding achievement in various national festivals and competitions, and whereas this award is a testament to the dedication of Waterville Senior High School teachers and the creativity of its students, past and present. Now therefore, I J. Corrello, as Mayor of Waterville, Maine, on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Waterville, I do hereby recognize and congratulate Waterville Senior High for its outstanding achievement in being named the 2023 NFHS Performing Arts School of Excellence.
Thank you. Just wanted to take a minute. My name is Sue Barry, and I'm the band director here in town. And this is Colin Wheatley, our strings teacher, Gail Pellegrini, our retired drama director.
As always, you.
So we just want to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing the distinction of the Performing Arts School of Excellence. This recognition is not just a testament to the hard work and dedication of the current and past department members, but also a celebration of the transformative power of the arts. We're so grateful for the support from our administration and school board who support the arts and are a vital component of any success that we achieve. And we are also grateful to you, our community leaders, for believing in us and for investing in the power of creativity. In a world often filled with division and discord, the arts provide common language and bring us together. The arts challenge us to think differently, to feel deeply, and to empathize with others' experiences, and they remind us of our shared humanity. This award is not just a recognition of the past achievements, but also a reminder of the incredible potential that lies ahead, and together, as a community of artists, supporters, and believers, we will continue to create, innovate, and share the magic of the performing arts here in Waterville and beyond. So, thank you very much.
Waterville has so much to be proud of in its schools, and we're, you know, we're just thrilled that you've received this award. The next proclamation tonight is not such a happy event, I'm sorry to say, but it is a necessary one. Last week, at the planning board meeting, there were some racist and anti-Semitic remarks that were made by anonymous people online, and it is something that this council firmly stands against, and we want to make sure this never happens again, and to send an unequivocal message that hate has no place here. Whereas on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, racist and anti-Semitic comments were made online at a public meeting by anonymous individuals with the intent to provoke and intimidate, and whereas these comments are offensive to the values of a council and do not in any way reflect the views of the city of Waterville, which supports all its citizens regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, and religion, and whereas Waterville is a diverse city with residents from many countries of origin, as well as the Wabanaki people native to this region, and whereas racist and anti-Semitic speech have no place in the civil discourse of our city, and whereas we are all responsible, both individually and collectively, for creating and fostering an inclusive community that values all people, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville on behalf of the citizens that the City of Waterville strongly condemns this cowardly act and must actively acknowledge and stand up against all forms of racism, anti-Semitism, bigotry, and hate speech in our community, and that the City of Waterville stands steadfast in our commitment to fostering an inclusive, respectful, civil environment where everyone in our community is treated with dignity and respect.
City manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the South End Neighborhood Association cleanup day this past weekend. As many of the audience, Paula and Anna are here, thank you for your efforts. Tom filled three dumpsters, also did the head of falls, and so it was a great community effort, lots of volunteers. Thank you to the Colby students also, who participated, great community event, and I think we're doing it again in April, correct? Thank you to all. Happy to announce we have made a selection for our community development position. Pleased to announce Michael Hall has been selected as our new community development specialist. Michael is currently the executive director of the Augusta Downtown Alliance, a position he's held for the last eight years. He comes to us with a wealth of experience in community outreach, organizing grant applications, and will be working on a number of projects here, important projects here, and we look forward to having him on our team beginning on December 1st, so welcome to him. Our downtown visioning process, we've been meeting staff, Public Works, city engineer, and talking about getting together some cost estimates and talking about some further planning efforts to really make sure this goes forward. We've had a lot of momentum in our downtown the last number of years, we want to make sure that continues with the implementation of this plan, and so if you remember what the council adopted a few weeks ago, we have all those projects in category one and two, and we intend to get moving on those sooner rather than later, so we hope in 2024 to have a number of the other elements of that plan in the works and hopefully being constructed next season. So, that's ongoing, and that's really exciting for our downtown. Also, in addition to that, some additional meetings I've had with Public Works and our city engineer regarding our city roads and infrastructure. I know this council established infrastructure on our roads as a priority at their last goal-setting session. Anyone that lives here and travels the roads here knows that infrastructure and roads need to be a priority for the city. So, we have done a bit of work in coming up with a list and are going to be putting forward a proposal that's going to need to be funded, it's going to require some investment, but it's going to encompass some of the worst roads in town and also some of the most heavily traveled roads that are really in rough shape, and we're going to be coming forward with, obviously, a proposal that's going to need to be funded, but I think if we don't take a big bite on getting our roads and infrastructure in order in the near future, these things are only going to get worse. So, we're going to be talking more about that, I think it's going to be a great discussion, but myself and staff have been working on coming up with a proposal that I think a lot of people will be happy to see, and it'll be a real investment in our city infrastructure, so that will be forthcoming. An announcement on November 16th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. here at 46 Front Street, we're going to be having an employee appreciation luncheon. All employees are welcome and of course encouraged to attend if they are able. I know obviously some in the public safety area are not going to be able to make it, but city offices will be closed from those hours to allow all staff to participate and attend, and as I've talked about, employee recognition is a really important priority of mine, and this is going to be another, you know, piece of that. So, again, November 16th, 12 noon to 2:00, city offices will be closed, and city staff is welcome to come here to a catered luncheon with some programming also. Temple and Front Street intersection, right out here, we had CSX onsite this last week to work on the light timing and preparation for that traffic signal going live. That traffic signal will be going live in about three or four weeks, once necessary signage has been installed by our Public Works crew, so this will be a big change for traffic in this area, there's going to be a traffic light, and people just need to be aware, I think, that there's going to be something new there, and you have to stop. So, we are going to have message boards out, obviously, warning people that there's an upcoming new traffic light, and hopefully avoid any mishaps there at that intersection. So, again, in a few weeks, we are going to have a traffic light out here stopping traffic. Next session of City Manager's open office hours will be November 13th, 2:30 to 4:30, and we're going to have it here at 46 Front Street in this chamber, and of course, all Waterville residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their views, thoughts, concerns, complaints, or anything else you'd like to share with me. So, I look forward to that, again, right here November 13th, 2:30 to 4:30. Another traffic safety matter, met with a group of residents in the Burley Street neighborhood along with some councillors here and city staff to talk about placing a four-way stop at the intersection of Burley and Winter, as well as some other traffic calming, you know, potential measures we can look at in the future, but those stop signs did go in in the past week, and so there is now a four-way stop at Burley and Winter, another new traffic pattern. Our PD has put out message board signs, also, again, warning motorists, there is a new traffic pattern here, and you need to stop, because for obviously many, many, many years there has been no stop sign there, so this is totally new. So, if you're traveling down Burley Street, just be aware you're going to have to stop in the middle of it, and hopefully people will get used to that new traffic pattern soon. I would like to say a big thank you to our city staff, in particular, our city clerk, Patty, for running a very good, smooth election yesterday at Thomas College, went off without a hitch very well, we had, I think, a pretty good turnout considering the year, so thank you Patty, thank you to all the clerk's office staff, and of course, to all the volunteers who spent a lot of time working at the polls. It's not always the most glamorous job, but we depend on them every year, and we want you to come back next year, because we have three elections next year for you guys to staff, so please, if you're interested in, I'll do a PSA for Patty here, if you're interested in working at the polls, please, we need you. It's a fun day with Patty at the polls, so please get in touch with us if you're interested in volunteering, but I just want to thank everyone who was involved in this reslection, absolutely.
Yeah, so I would like to recognize the staff that helped out yesterday, but in particular, we had a group of students from Waterville High School, the National Honor Society folks were there, so we had about 12 students, they were fantastic, and it was a pleasure to work with them. My challenge going forward is to get some younger people involved in elections, I think it's a great opportunity, once we kind of hook them, hopefully they're there for life. So, thank you to Jessica Graham, in particular, the teacher at Waterville High who kind of connected us, and that was a great opportunity.
Excellent, thank you. The last thing, and I just want to mention, Veterans Day is on the 11th, and there will be a parade that's departing from the Elm at 21 College Avenue. It's going to be going down College Avenue, up Main Street, turning left on Common Street, and then there will be a ceremony in Castangue Square on the steps of City Hall. Again, that's 11:00 a.m. on the 11th, this Veterans Day, so please come out and support our veterans if you're able to. Thank you.
Council comments or committee?
I know Brian's already said it once, but I want to thank everybody that showed up for the cleanup last Saturday. Brian was there, we had Matt and Mike, dump guys, other contractors that showed up with trailers, it was a big success, Colby Boys baseball team, we freighted three 30-yard dump bodies, and we still had stuff laying there that we were trying to get shoved in at 12 o'clock when we were supposed to be done. A great, it's a model of when community people get together toward a common cause to get things done, this is something that the city does not do for us, we do for ourselves. We get the city's support, but I've heard people wanting to know why Ward 7 gets the special attention, it's because we go out and we take care of it ourselves, we are trying to pick up our neighborhood. That's what's going on with the center community thing. Thanks, everybody, again.
So, first, I just wanted to report on the Resiliency Committee met yesterday, which is why I was running to the polls afterwards. Patty, if you saw me sprinting around, yeah, I had a very tight schedule yesterday, I had a very tight schedule, but we met, and I did get to vote, but the Resiliency Committee met and we discussed, well, we're planning to submit a community action grant through the Community Resilience Partnership, it's a main state grant with, there's been 74 communities that have already received these grants, we're part of the partnership and hope to put a grant in for the next funding round, it's a $50,000 grant, so we talked about what we wanted to do with that, and one of the areas that is part of the funding agenda, the funding priorities of the grant, was making the school HVAC system more sustainable, so we explored the possibility of putting some heat pumps at the Albert S. Hall School, people may be aware that the school kids, fourth and fifth graders, missed a number of days of school last year because it was too hot in that school building, that's going to become an increasingly important problem, and so, you know, and heat pumps, we looked at different ways of dealing with that problem, Superintendent Hallen was there as part of the conversation, we also looked at a number of other ways that we could use that grant, such as purchasing trees, and, help me out, Claude, Claude was there, Council Frankie was there, it was also installing LED lights in all city buildings was another thing that was discussed, we talked about charging stations downtown, a number of them, but the one that we spent most of the time talking about was trying to make sure that our students have, yeah, conditions that are conducive to learning in the schools. So anyways, we have a new Grania, I forget Grania's last name, but it's the new grant writer dedicated to resiliency at KV Cog, she was there, I got to meet her for the first time, and everything is on track, I'm optimistic about the next funding round, we also talked a little bit about a federal grant called Renew America Schools Grant that also is focused on HVAC systems, I'm particularly interested in looking at ways to potentially mitigate wildfire smoke in schools if that becomes a problem in the future, we were able to avoid that last year, but that was because of fortuitous low pressure in the Gulf of Maine, and it's probably going to be a problem in the future. So anyways, we're trying to deal with making Waterville more resilient and getting some grants to make that happen. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about briefly was, we had this past weekend, on Saturday, we had the Quarry Road ski swap that is in support of Nordic Ski Programming out there at Quarry Road, it was very successful. Unfortunately, I don't have the exact numbers, we sold about $1,200 worth of ski club gear, and then there was more that we netted from consignment, much more that we netted from consignment, but I do know that it was more successful than last year, we made about 800 bucks more than last year, so that's a great thing, helping to subsidize that programming for students and increase access in Waterville, so that low-income youth can get out on that amazing, really amazing facility. And the last point on this topic is that ski passes are now open, if people want to get passes for the winter season out there at Quarry Road, if you haven't gone out there, go out and take a hike, it's really, really beautiful on those trails right now, so, that's
The resilience committee met a week before last, and we're still working on developing a ordinance to bring before council to set up a commission for historic preservation. The comprehensive plan committee is, was scheduled to meet tomorrow, but we're swearing in four new people that you're going to appoint tonight, Mr. Mayor, and so we've decided to postpone that meeting until next Thursday, that'll be November the 17th, that'll be meeting 5:00, and we hope that we can meet in this room, that's what they are, we're back up to the size of the committee that we started at, so that more people, and it's, of course, a public meeting, so if anybody wants to come in, put in their two cents, we'll be talking about the, a survey that Joel Green from KV Cog is putting together that will be sent out to the citizens to see what kind of ideas that folks have for the comprehensive plan. Then next month, I think we're going to start in with a series of public meetings where we'll, to get further input from the citizenry, that, scheduled then, we'll move to January, when we'll try to put all of that information together, and come up with a proposal to bring before council. I would like to recognize the work that the planning director, Anne Beveridge, has done on this, she has collected an absolute ton of data and organized it to where even a non-data person like me can understand what, so, thank you, Anne, that's where we stand at. So, next week, comprehensive plan on Thursday.
Anyone else?
So, very briefly, the housing committee monthly meeting was postponed by a week, so we are actually meeting next Wednesday at 4:00, and And I'm not sure of the location, but we'll figure that out and get it on the website, so. Thank you.
Public comments.
Hi, I'm Nancy Sanford, Ward 1, and I'm just here to remind you all about the Starfish Village fundraiser tomorrow night at 7:00 at the Main Film Center. The film Shoe Shine Caddy, which is about a homeless gentleman, and Leonard Manzella, a filmmaker, followed him for 14 months, and it's really good. And I was talking to Leonard this week, and he told me that just recently he was at a film festival in Berlin, Germany, with a film, and it got a special mention. So, I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Colleen Madigan. I'm Ward 3 now. I used to be Ward 6, but I'm Ward 3. I'm here tonight with Carla from the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing down there. Councilor DeBrito and I started having meetings on Tuesday mornings. Some of the unhoused folks, some of the folks who use the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen, Mayor Coelho has come at times, Councilor Green has come at times, as has the Chief of Police and Fire Chief. We've had some interesting conversations. I think I'm really pleased that we're listening to folks and bringing people together at the table, because it's also area providers being there. And some of that information that has come out in there that we've discussed has actually been incorporated into the plan that I think Chief Essler will be presenting to you. But I also want to talk a little bit about some of the things we've been, other things we've been talking about, particularly the need for recovery residences, safe housing options for folks with substance use disorder. We've heard this from both unhoused people and from area providers and things like that. And we really don't have a reputable one in this area, and it's difficult for folks, many unhoused folks who have substance use disorder work in our community, so whenever people tell me that, like, "Well, we don't have that problem," or, you know, "You know, they're just homeless." I'm like, "I don't know who you think made your coffee, or cooked your burger," or, you know, all that. They live in your neighborhood, folks. They live, you know, they're the people next door. So, I would just like to put out there that anything the city of Waterville can do to put out there in the ether that we need recovery residences would be greatly appreciated, and I think it would be an enormous benefit to our city, both for residents, for economic development, right? I mean, we need more workers. Workers need a place to live. People in recovery want to work and get on with their lives and their neighbors, so thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
How you doing? My name is Aaron Saint Laurent. I was at the hearing last week when that happened. I'm a newly resident of Waterville from Massachusetts, and I would just like to know what else is going to happen in regards to trying to curb the racist comments and things of that nature. Because since I've been out here, I've been a victim of a few racist comments. My child goes to a school right now in Waterville, and he's not getting a proper education as well, because, you know, so I'm just trying to figure it out.
So, I've, we've been tossing back and forth the ideas of what we're going to do and how we're going to amend policies to stop people from doing that, and the truth is, you're not going to stop them. People, by and large, are good, kind-hearted people. There's always an idiot in the bunch.
That is true.
You don't know me from a hole in the wall. Growing up, my dad was from Haiti, so being a little white kid, walking around with a six-foot black man as a child, you get to watch what people look at when they look at your dad. Did he kidnap you? I mean, there's some weird sort of things that happen in comments that people say, and my dad used to tell me that it's not indicative of who people are, those are just bad apples. And I'll tell you that even if we took away all of the internet access that we have to allow people to get ahold of us, we would get letters like the ones I got today, from cowards who send them with absolutely no return address. So, it's unfortunate that it happens, and it's ugly that it happens. I think we have to continue to call it out when it does happen, but understand that by and large, it's not the majority of people. We have to fight back those voices and explain that that is not the sort of community that we want to live in. But short of that, I'm, people are always going to say stupid, ugly nonsense. It's never going to end. We have to find another way to move past it, because we can't just keep giving these people, I mean, they have a voice, but it's ugly. Like, every single councillor up here got a letter today that is absolutely disgusting. And, I don't know. Go ahead. Can you change your ear, Jay?
What?
Can I start here?
I just, I just want to say that I think that we don't need to tolerate it, and we are going to be discussing our policy on participation later tonight. And this is, you know, not the end of it. I think, you know, this council is committed to, as the proclamation said, having, having an environment, a city, that is, that does not tolerate hate speech. And so, and it is a collective enterprise, so it's important for people to speak up as well, but this will be an ongoing discussion.
Thank you.
You step down. I have to say, I'm very sad that a new resident in Waterville is not having the experience that I want them, that I wish they were having in Waterville. You, your children, the rest of your family. And I, so a couple things. First of all, I want you to know that there are many people in Waterville. I hope the majority of Waterville, I hope everyone in Waterville, these, you know, the people that came to that meeting and these letters are, I do not believe they're people in this specific community. The letter, these letters are addressed from South Portland somewhere, you know, Zoom, it's hard to trace where these people are from. But, yeah, I want you to know that there are many, many, many people in Waterville that want this town to be a welcoming, safe haven for all people who choose to be a part of that inclusive community, right? So, yeah, know that you have friends, that you have allies, that you have welcoming neighbors that are delighted that you've chosen to make Waterville your home, and that we hope that Waterville becomes a place where you can build your dreams into reality. That's what we want for you and your family. And whatever I can do, whatever the rest of this council can do, please help us. I would love to hear more of your thoughts on ways that you think that we could help you. What would make you and your family feel more safe and included?
Safe. So, I would like to address both of you, okay? The racism is in this community, and it's very strong in this community.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm sorry that you went through that with your dad. I am not one who's going to sit down, okay? I bought my home in Waterville. I paid cash for my home in Waterville. I'm ready to sell and get out. Since he came almost two years ago, I've been stopped three times, because if you want to stop racism, stop it in the police department first, okay? I take my son to the hospital in the middle of the night, because at 10:00 at night, he's having the hives head to toe because of medicine a doctor gave him that he's allergic to, and it's in his record. I get stopped, okay? Because a nurse at there calls up the police, "Hey, stop this. There's a black guy with a white woman, and they got a kid. They probably got drugs, okay?" This man doesn't do drugs, never done drugs, okay? I wouldn't have brought him here had he been a bad person, okay? Three times we've been stopped by the police, because there's a black man, white woman, must be drugs, okay? We fight the school every single day. The same school that was standing here that my son sings for, okay? My son, who sings all their assemblies. I get phone calls every day, what a great job he does, okay? But they treat my son like crap, because my son is a mixed race. My son is in 2nd grade, okay? I'm still fighting the school, every day, because this year's the first year he's in school. They don't follow his IEP at all. They treat him like crap. Last year, he did 30 minutes a day, okay? They did nothing to help, even though he had an IEP. So there's racism in this school over here, there's racism in the police department, there's racism at the hospital, and, you know, up until last year, I was like, "No, these people, they're just, they're just like sensitive," okay? But I see it. I am a white woman, he's a black man. We are victims of racism all the time. We live in a housing community. I guarantee you, I know who did that on there. I can almost bet my bottom dollar, because we've been dealing with it for a year now. The guy wants to develop next door. He doesn't care about people that are paying all this extra money. We pay up the yin yang for that. He doesn't care about us. I get racism comments all the time. Just yesterday, one of my neighbors says, "You should hear the racism comments by the people that run this place." I'm not dealing with it anymore. You want to stop racism? We've got to start with the police department, we've got to start with the hospital, we've got to start with schools. You guys do have a say in what happens at schools. You do have a say in what happens to the police, okay? The police should be shaking the hands of people like him, because he wants to help people. We go out all summer long. We were feeding the people that are living down at Riverwalk. We were giving them food, okay? We did it ourselves, we did it out of our own pockets, but this is how we get treated? Guy down there wants to beat the crap out of him because he's black. It does start here, and the only way anybody's going to stop it is to go out and use their voice.
I really want to thank you. Sorry, I really, like, I'm like, just mind-blown. I really want to thank you for actually speaking up, because I've been here for about five years, and I've been dealing with the same issues through the schools, in the hospital. I've been dealing with that. You know, I try not to make a commotion, try not to like shine a light on it, to not be negative, but I really, I do appreciate what you said today. And, and I feel like, as a city, like, we don't have no BIPOC community, like, we don't have nowhere that some, for a person of color to go and feel comfortable. As much as they say that we are welcome here, but, like, the city represents that. Where do we have BIPOC staff? Where do we have that? We don't. So, I really appreciate you coming here and talking about that today, because it really hit home today.
It's become a real problem, a problem that I can't turn a blind eye to any longer, so.
Oh, no.
Thank you. I would reach out to my office and Brian's office, so we can have a more in-depth discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And also, too, the discrimination that goes on, it's not just people of color, it's also people with a disability. Like, you really want to put it out there. There is a lot of stuff going on, but people are just afraid to even come here and speak about it. There's a lot of stuff going out there.
Is there anyone online?
I'm sorry, what?
I think, did you, I guess we're, are we moving on?
Yes, right now. We're moving on, but it's not over. People need to grow up. If you have a hard time understanding how somebody else lives, you're the issue. You cannot, we cannot be tearing each other down all the time and picking on people because of the color of their skin, or because of a disability, or because they don't act like us, because it's just gross behavior. And it's happening everywhere, and we definitely don't want it in our own community. Consent, the consent agenda.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Patty, all in favor?
Would you like to read items by title only?
Move to read items by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Moving on to old business, Resolution 172, 2023.
Authorize the use of funds.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion.
Which funds are we authorizing?
We're not, we're, you're going to vote it down. This is the one that I brought up.
This is what you brought forward last, okay?
Right. So.
A little backstory for the, so, this came out as a discussion from some of the times that we'd gone down to the soup kitchen with Todd, with Colleen, Flavia, some other people from the police department, fire department, and this is one of the ideas that we had talked about, and really, it needed more discussion. It helped foster a discussion so that we have a better plan forward. There's too much liability for the city to go out and buy yards. I'm going to talk about that a little later, when we discuss the other plan that we have, but for right now, I would tell you to turn it down, because it's not, it needs a lot more work, and it's not something that the city's going to be able to do. We're going to go and look to do some outreach with private organizations that are constantly out there on the ground, which is part of what was going to happen originally with the yards, anyway. It wasn't like you were just going to give people a space to sleep and leave them to their own devices. That doesn't do them any good, that enables. What we need to do is make sure that we're constantly out there, touching base with the people who are there, and then getting them connected with services. We've looked at how other municipalities have done it. We looked at how in Bangor, they had spent some time going through the encampments. Anyone who was willing or actively seeking services was allowed to stay in place while they were seeking those services, and I think that's part of what I would like to see Waterville do going forward. I think it's important that anyone who is living down there understands that we're going to be doing lots of outreach. But if you're a troublemaker, then you can't stay there. Nobody really wants people to be at the Riverwalk as a permanent solution. It's where they were at the moment, so we want to help people where they are and then figure it out from there. But at this point, this isn't the plan that's going to get us there. The next plan is going to get us part of the way there, but it's still not 100%.
Right, so.
Vote it down.
I don't think we have anything more to say about this particular plan.
Nope.
Unless I'm mistaken, right? Okay.
Well, I just want to, I just want to say, like, I really appreciate you bringing it up, because you really opened up a conversation, you opened up a dialogue for collaboration. So I really do appreciate you bringing this up. I mean, you know, it's not what we wanted at the time, but I really appreciate the conversation.
All in favor?
Well, we have to make a motion to table indefinitely?
I'll second that.
You want a table, you want a table, or you want to rescind this?
Indefinite postponement would be the vote.
Yeah.
All in favor? I'll oppose.
Counselor Frankie, are you?
I'm not sure. Are we voting to table?
Yes, indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
No.
No? Thank you. Well, it's six in favor and one opposed. Vote six in favor and one opposed, it was postponed indefinitely.
Moving on to new business. Resolution 174, 2023.
Adopt the unhoused winter season recommendation plan.
Voue do adopt.
I'll second.
Can we get that spelled out? So everybody understands.
You want to speak to it?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So with Mayor Quell's proposal at the last meeting, we formed a kind of working group, including some community stakeholders, including the Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter, Waterville Soup Kitchen and others. Our police and fire department, our chiefs put together, I think, a good first step and sort of a ten-point plan of priorities for the city to focus on to address the unhoused crisis, especially during the winter season. If you look at this list, there are obvious ones that are more sort of near-term solutions we can work on. And I think some, some buckets that are more mid-range and some longer-term goals. But it is a, a first sort of stab at a comprehensive list for the city to focus on to begin addressing this crisis. Again, I want to thank Chief Essler and Chief Bonney for taking the lead in developing this list and for all of their input. And I thought we had a pretty good meeting. Mayor was in attendance, I guess like community stakeholders, some counselors to really get a, a good encompassing conversation on this issue started. And that conversation has begun. And I think we have some, some good goals to look at and to work on as a first step to addressing what is a very large crisis that is obviously much bigger than the city of Waterville. But we need to do our part here and soon to begin to address this. So I think that opens the conversation, but Mr. Mayor, I know you have a lot into this. But again, thank you to city staff. Chief Bonney is here to talk further if you have any specific questions. So thank you to them for, for getting this ball rolling.
Would it be appropriate to have Chief Bonney speak to the plan?
Good evening. So Chief Essler and I, he wanted to be here tonight, but he was unable to with the change in day. He had a scheduling conflict. But we sat down to really put some thought into what can we do that is safe and realistic for the city to help our neighbors that are, that are unhoused? And so really what we came up with is using the infrastructure that is currently in place, but focusing on trying to make sure that we're addressing the issues of maybe those who have fallen through the cracks and who haven't received services and working together with general assistants and the Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter and the Soup Kitchen to make sure that we're doing the proper outreach. And, and you mentioned outreach, Mayor. We absolutely need to be doing that. We need to be doing that with Todd. But we also mentioned in our plan that we need to look at, you know, other philanthropic places, folks, individuals that may be willing to assist outside of the city budget. This is one of those issues, much like the opiate epidemic, that we are not going to solve on our own. We're going to have to work together with our community partners and our stakeholders and the folks that are actually living these experiences. And so we're hoping, I have actually flyers here tonight to hand out. I know Paula's going to take some for volunteers so that we can actually train volunteers, trained by the city, together with the Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter so that we can open up our emergency shelter in emergent circumstances. But additionally, those folks, once trained, we hope would be able to augment staff at the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen, which we recognize as a great asset to the city because not only is it providing the necessary food for folks to survive, it's giving people a warm place to be when the winter comes along. So we see the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen as just an absolutely necessary ally in this issue. And so I can go down, I could go down and read through every bullet point, but those are the highlights and you know, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to try to get to them.
So we're going to try to help them extend hours from, what, twelve to eight?
Absolutely. So you know, one of the things that we were concerned about is that the warming shelter doesn't open back up until eight PM. If it is super cold, then obviously they're going to allow folks in. But Maine is plenty cold even when it's not super cold. And so we were hoping to be able to augment the staff at the, the Soup Kitchen and you know, it's obviously a conversation that needs to continually be had, but it would be nice if we could, if we could do that to keep them open a little longer.
Carly, what will that take?
It would take volunteers. We, we need additional volunteers to come in and staff in the afternoon. We're pretty maxed from eight to twelve thirty and I would not want to add any additional burden. I don't mind staying a few, I mean, I don't mind staying until, I don't know about eight o'clock, but six thirty to eight o'clock is a long day by day to week. But I'm willing to, you know, to do it because I don't want her stay, but we do need, we do need the help of the public.
And, and we certainly can't rely on Carla any more than we already do because she's over there doing far more than anybody could expect and far more than her fair share. And I think we recognize that on our side of the fence and I think that the folks that she serves recognizes that also.
So if I could just summarize the plan as I understand it, in particular, the short-term action steps, because I think that these, this plan has short-term, medium-term and long-term ideas, but obviously we're having this conversation because the temperatures are dropping. So as I understand it, this plan is to continue to rely on the, on the homeless shelter to provide a frontline warming center for unhoused population. There are twenty beds there available just for the emergency shelter in addition to the, the people that are in service there. We're working with general assistants to make sure all available options are explored. The idea of the outreach volunteers and training is great. I think that's, that's a very exciting element here and that would enable the Soup Kitchen to extend their hours. The other element in this plan is to use this, this building as an emergency shelter if needed, using that volunteer workforce, volunteer force of, of citizens who would be trained because that's important, so that we have that emergency extra overflow space when we need it. Does that, I think that covers the plan in the short term. Yes?
I think that adequately sums it up, just with a highlight to the outreach and, and recognizing that the Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter does have some resources so that hopefully we can get some of the folks diverted to housing, you know, so that they don't have to utilize those twenty beds in the warming shelter.
Exactly. And I think, as you mentioned, Todd Stevens, our community outreach coordinator, has already been doing outreach with, with the population there and many of them are coming into services and coming into the homeless shelter, so that should continue. And I think at the meeting, we discussed coordinating with other groups who are doing outreach so that we can make the most of that. That's a really important driver in what is going to bring people into, inside and, and make it sustainable for them to find housing in the long term. Oh, and there's funding involved, right? Recommendation that we fund the Soup Kitchen and, and the homeless shelter as well, I think. I mean, this all takes, takes resources, both human and financial. And we did have an ARPA committee call for proposals and that those proposals will be considered next week.
Anyone else? And if you find yourself unhoused, despite all of the efforts from the city and all the programs and outreach that we're trying to do, I know that the city isn't going to fund yurts or I don't know why we call them yurts. They're canvas tents. The yurt name is just weird. Makes it sound fancier than it actually is. It's emergency shelter. So if you're outside, you've fallen through the cracks, you're not coming in, contact my office. The city can't do it, but as a private citizen, I will make sure that I find you something suitable that will keep you warmer than just being out there. I've already got these canvas tents coming this week. I knew what the city was going to do. I knew what we had for plans. And if there is an emergency situation and somebody is stuck outside somewhere, please get ahold of me. Do not wait. After that, the rest of your.
So I just need to, oh, I shouldn't raise my hand.
We didn't, we didn't talk this afternoon at the finance committee about any additional funds that the city might be asked to support the programs to feed people and to house people. Are those, are there discussions going on aside from the ARPA committee to consider any additional help that the city can throw at this problem?
I, I think we don't know how much we need yet. And I think that they're sort of figuring out whatever it's going to go. We don't know what it's going to cost to have extra volunteers, what it's going to cost to have the soup, some other data that we have to have that we just don't have information for and then it's going to go to the finance committee.
So this is an ongoing exercise and I presume that this working group will continue to meet.
You know, I'm not sure. I think this is sort of a one-time get-together. I don't think it was meant to be ongoing, ongoing committee or working group.
With that information, Brian's going to have to take those recommendations and figure out some other stuff, but we're not funding, we're not asking for any additional funding at this moment.
And I'll just say during this, this meeting that we had, there were no discussions of specific funding or finances. There was a discussion of ideas and proposals really. There was no talk of dollars and cents, so that's, that's upcoming.
I'm just thinking that when we, if you start down the road to take action, the city starts down the road to take action, there usually is some money to be spent at some point along the way.
Agreed.
Number nine does say we should consider funding for the Lighthouse Soup Kitchen. Doesn't say how much, but as I said, we had a process. We have a proposal from that group and some others. We have fifty thousand dollars already allocated in ARPA funds. And it is up to the council to decide if we want to allocate more, but I think we do need to know what it's going to go towards.
Yeah, and we also had a discussion too that for the emergency shelter, that the Soup Kitchen would get a separate fund. So their, their application funding, that would be something completely different. I thought that was the conversation that we had.
I, I feel like you're, splitting up fifty thousand dollars amongst different groups is something that we do every year. I think that this is going to be an addition.
An addition.
It's going to have to be.
Yes.
You're not going to get through the winter giving them three to five thousand dollars. It's just not going to happen. It doesn't work that way. So at some point, no matter where it is, whether it be ideas that come from out of thin air, you guys are going to have to spend money and throw actual money at this problem at some point. In other communities who are watching, and I'm talking about Winslow and Oakland and Fairfield and anyone else that connects to Waterville. Some of these people have come from your communities. Get to the table and help us figure this out. It's not only on Waterville, it's on every single one of our regional partners.
Mayor, you have someone online that would like to speak?
Please.
Katie Spencer White, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Wonderful. I apologize I couldn't be there in person with you all today, but I did want to take an opportunity to let folks know who are listening that our warming center is open. There are fifteen or twenty additional beds available. In our first couple of nights, we averaged approximately seven to eight folks who are coming inside. Last night, we had fifteen folks, so we're continuing to monitor those numbers. For folks who might need to consider coming into shelter, I wanted to reassure folks about the, the very, we have very few barriers to folks coming in. If you have an assistance animal, if you're not sure if it's an assistance animal, we can help you figure that out. But we allow animals to come in. We allow people in our warming center to stay with their partners. And we don't, we don't restrict people because they might have an addiction issue amongst many other things. So we're up and running. We are planning on continuing to operate through all of the, the cold weather months through the end of April. We also have a number of other programs that might be of value to people if you haven't heard about them already. We have a diversion program that is very successful, successful helping people stay housed. So if you are having an issue regarding an eviction, back rent, et cetera, we might be able to support with that. And we also have a rapid rehousing program that can help people connect with area landlords and secure new housing as quickly as possible. So there's a range of services available to people in the greater Kennebec County region and Waterville specifically. Don't hesitate to reach out. We are open 24/7. If you are outside and you need to come inside, regardless of the hour, you can knock on our door and someone will open it and let you in and get you warmed up.
Thank you, Katie. I look forward to our Portland trip. I've been doing a bunch of research.
Always, always research.
That's how it goes. All right. Anyone else, Patty?
No.
All right. All in favor? Moving on to resolution 175, 2023.
Authorize the issuance of a victor's license to Nicholas Pilot doing business as Swish Indoor Golf.
Voue do adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Is the person here?
Don't believe so, no.
Where is it?
It's on Water Street.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That should be fine.
And no shameless promotion?
I tried to give them some, but they weren't here. All right, all in favor? Moving on to resolution 176, 2023.
Authorize the issuance of a liquor license to Nicholas Pilot doing business as Swish Indoor Golf.
Voue do adopt.
And golf.
Second. I go hand in hand.
Any discussion? All in favor? Moving on to resolution 177, 2023.
Confirm appointments by the mayor to the Comprehensive Plan Review Commission.
Voue do adopt.
Second. Discussion, Patty, you got names?
Do. Paula Raymond, Kim Lane, Greg Bazakis and Scott Beal.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Do these folks need to get sworn in, Patty?
They do.
And can they just come to your office to do that?
Yes, they can.
And is any, if anyone's here, can they do it right now?
They can.
No, I mean, you, you're one of the names, right?
If you're here at the end, we can, I'll hook up with you.
Go ahead and read the names. Oh, you did.
I did.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Order 178, 2023.
Approve a central main power company easement on Mitchell Road.
Voodoo adopt.
Second. And this is to do some, the stuff we were talking about earlier, Jack, at the airport?
Right, it's for additional hangers up at the airport.
Yep.
This is up at the airport. That's correct.
Yeah.
They need extra power up there for the new, uh, new pads to hold hangers.
And this was recommended up to the full council from the Finance Committee. All in favor? Moving on to Ordinance 179, 2023.
Amend the zoning ordinance accessory dwelling units.
Voodoo adopt.
Second. Any discussion, Patty? Brian, we have a...
So this is just to bring us into compliance with LD 2003, which I'm sure you've heard about. We have our city planner here also, Ann, if she would like to say a few words or if you have any specific questions.
Ann, I got something for you. Like, you've been here forever. Do you like this plan?
Pardon me?
Do you like it?
Do I like the, the word? I don't think we have, we don't have any choice. It's state law, so we, we will be in compliance with the state law. There are only a few things in here that the state gave the city discretion. Those are the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit, commonly called an ADU. And the Planning Board is recommending 700 square feet as the maximum size. The other is whether or not to allow short-term residential rentals in ADUs. And the Planning Board is recommending that you do not allow that. But you should know that if you decide not to allow them in ADUs, they still would be allowed in the primary residence as long as it's not in the residential A-zone. This Planning Board did recommend some other language that wasn't part of the, the law. They reviewed ordinances from some other towns and those, those obviously are in the ordinance that you have in front of you. But they liked the idea that the owner of the property should live in either the ADU or the primary residence and that these two units should not be sold separately.
I, I, I don't dislike the 700 square feet. I still think that telling people what they can do with the property, I mean, as long as it... They could have an Airbnb in that zone, in, in some of the zones. If you took my property, I could have an Airbnb in the house. I could rent the entire house as an Airbnb. And to say that the other unit that's attached or on my property can't be used in the same manner. I mean, we've seen properties where this has happened and people just turn around and rent it for 31 days. I, I think that we are trying to add a solution to a problem that we don't currently have.
Well, I would point out one thing.
We don't have an Airbnb problem right now. And telling people that are gonna put a unit on their property, I mean, they can rent the house, but not the ADU.
Mr. Mayor, there are two ways to have a second unit. One is the way we're doing it right now, and that requires you, in the residential B-zone, it's 5,000 square feet per unit. So if you have, if you have a lot in the residential B-zone, you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you have a single-family home, you can add another unit. And you can do an Airbnb in both of those units if you want. This just means that if you're adding an ADU, then you, you can't have the short-term residential rental in the ADU. And the difference, the main difference between an ADU and a unit that you add, that you add now with the required minimum lot size. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I think that was the point. The ADU does not have to have any land area whatsoever. It has to only meet the, the side setback and rear setback requirements. And there's a maximum amount of land area that can be covered by building. So in other words, it's not the same. The ADU is not the same as your second unit that has the land that's required.
But currently, if somebody has an apartment above their garage, is that not considered an ADU?
No, no. An A, no. This, you have a definition of ADU that's provided for you by the state.
Okay.
And all the requirements for ADUs are provided for you by the state. And they say that this second unit does not have to have the land that ordinarily would be required of a second unit. So you can have a lot that's smaller than what's required now and still add a second unit.
And the, so the only thing that you're stopping, that you'll stop is Airbnb. Somebody can still short-term rental for 31 days.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I think that the intention behind this stipulation was acknowledging the fact that this law is intended to increase the amount of affordable housing that, that the city has. So I, I don't see any problem in accepting that. And I think that, that we need to, I think that we do need to look at our short-term rentals and make sure that we are, that people are registering them and that they are operating legally.
But the fundamental issue before us right now is simply to be in compliance with state law.
That's right.
Everything else is side issues.
Well, adding that stipulation is unnecessary to get us to be in compliance with the state. Am I wrong? I mean, if what you're saying, if that's what you're saying...
I think what they're looking at is the fact that you can do this. We're trying to find long-term housing, not 30, 31-day housing. That's the intent here with the Planning Board. We want better than 31-day housing. We want six-month housing. We want one-year housing. Not 31-day housing. We've got enough 31-day housing. We need long-term... What their intent is, they want long-term housing.
This doesn't stop that.
Well, what the, what the Planning Board is suggesting is that while we're complying with state law, that we shouldn't, uh, move in the direction of short-term housing.
We have time to discuss this. We don't have to waste the entire day. This is gonna come back up for another vote anyway. All in favor? Discussion items. Process to inform and implementation, implementation working group to study specific topics requiring additional analysis.
Just regarding the downtown visioning process, that was maybe not clear there. So I, I think, you know, as we talked about earlier, we have those category three items in the plan that was approved by the council. I know Councilor Green has put forward some ideas for how to form this group and what it should look like and maybe some of the expertise that's required on the groups. We wanted to get just a discussion item in front of the council for next steps and how we go about doing this. And I know Councilor Green has some sort of concrete thoughts that she put forward to the council for discussion.
Yeah, so what I shared with the council comes from the recommendations that we got from BBB as to what this implementation working group would do. It would, as, as Brian said, focus on group three, which involve more complex projects such as improving public transit, downtown parking management, identifying community spaces, housing, et cetera. So these are things, these are not things that the city can, can do either on its own or with a partner. It requires further discussion with really a group of, of stakeholders in the city that can mobilize, in, in many cases, larger groups to build consensus and, and get advice around these issues. So my recommendation, I, I took the seven items and I kind of mapped them onto the, the four planning themes of the, of the plan. Each theme has one or two items in it. And so just looked at who are the, who are the stakeholders that we would need to think about how we're gonna tackle this list. And it seems to me that a, a smaller working group would be more efficient, five or six people. And those people could then go and, and bring in others as needed to address how we're gonna implement these ideas or study them to see if we want to implement them. So, you know, my, my thought is we have someone from city staff, city council, someone representing nonprofit institutions, the business community, social services, and resident groups. And that we could have someone representing each of those areas and, as I said, together, come up with a plan to, to tackle the various themes or projects either at the same time or concurrently, however that group thinks it best to proceed.
And how would this small group be chosen?
Well, that is a good question. It could be something that some counselors and the mayor and city manager get together and, and put forward a recommendation.
So you're thinking that maybe we should have a council working group to bring something before...
I mean, that's certainly one possibility. The other, the other thing I just wanna point out is that we have a community development specialist coming on staff December 1st. So this individual, Michael Hall, as, as Brian mentioned, is gonna surely be an important piece of this. And so perhaps that person should be involved in, in thinking about this community, this committee, certainly in implementing, implementing the plan. So I don't know that there's any rush to get this group off the ground, especially since when thinking about capacity, the city's already working on priorities one and two, or areas one and two. So I don't know. Your thoughts on this, Brian?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say also that I'm gonna be fully engaged and involved here. I know Mike Hall's coming on board, but I am certainly gonna be very involved in this 'cause it's really important stuff. So, yeah, I think there's several different ways you can approach forming this committee. There could be a, the sort of committee for the committee, as, as we discussed, is one, is one option. It could just be, you know, I guess, a straight-up mayoral appointment. But this is a, a working group. It wasn't set out to be a formal committee, you know, I guess, per se. So, yeah, I, I think obviously the, the formation of it and that process is, you know, important. But, you know, I think if we did have a, a smaller working group to talk about the working group, we could at least maybe talk about, identify the areas of expertise needed and kind of run through and vet some names and maybe solicit some interest. And then come forward back to this full body for a presentation and, and adoption. You know, something like that may be the best route, best route forward. But I guess there are several different ways to do it. But we wanna obviously be inclusive of anyone who is, you know, has some interest. But we are looking at specific areas of expertise that are gonna be able to, you know, contribute to this committee. 'Cause a lot of it is very, you know, kind of specific stuff that really should have some people with some knowledge in, in those particular areas helping us out here.
Any other discussion? Moving on to the next one. Amendments to remote participation policy.
So this item, as was said earlier, is really in response to the events of the Planning Board recently. There are, again, we wanted to, to put forward this discussion. There's probably a lot of different ideas, a lot of things to say. But one thing is clear, and that's, you know, we've had an incident here that many other communities have fallen victim to. And I think it requires a response. I think it requires an examination of what we're doing, how we're conducting business, and how remote meetings or Zoom is part of that or is not part of that. I will say there are many communities around the state, smaller and larger than us, that are not doing hybrid meetings, they're not using Zoom. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but it's not something we have to do. But I, I will say, some personal opinion of mine is I think it's become too easy from behind a black screen in a remote location to get online and completely disrupt a meeting and say horrible vile things. And it's happening, and it interferes with the conduct, the, you know, the normal procedure with, with city business. When this happens during a meeting, the whole meeting is, is really thrown off. And so it's, it's very disruptive. So I think we're looking for a discussion. We're looking for some ideas on what to do next. And, and the question should be raised, have remote meetings and Zoom, which was a COVID-era thing, you know, kind of lived its usefulness. I think there's, there's a lot of good things about it. But one really bad thing is, again, people from behind a black screen somewhere else come in and completely disrupt our meetings and say things that I think no one here should have to be subject to. So to start the discussion, that's why it's on here.
So I, I've had a lot of conversations about this in, in response to the Planning Board meeting and, and the awful things that were said, which I was made aware of the, the following day. I think there needs to be checks and balances. I do know that, you know, in the conversations that I've had, while Zoom is convenient and easy, I think it's important that if there's a way, and I'm not a techie guy at all. I don't know how the, the whole Zoom thing is. But, you know, to, to, to punish, you know, those wishing to participate in, you know, in city meetings, I, I think if there's a way that we can, you know, either like email verification, I, I was told about like email verification and doing, doing something, that, that, that could be another option. Or, of course, eliminating it completely. And if you wanna participate in a discussion, you have to come in person and do it.
I, I, I will raise an objection to getting rid of it altogether, just like I did when we first tried to do it. It gives people access. It gives people access to us. And we've already said that it accomplishes a lot of good things. There are deficits to technology. Having policies in place that allow, makes it so that we have to sort of check emails. There are systems that can do that. We don't have to have somebody physically looking. And then it's logging in IP addresses that our police department can then track down. I mean, we can't run and hide every time somebody says something vile to us because then they win. And nobody said anything today, and we still got vile stuff. So I don't know what the answer is. I think eliminating Zoom altogether is not the answer. I think it impedes people from being able to access us. And it's always some, I, something that I've always fought for since we've been here is to give people extreme amounts of access to us, and by any means that they can. Be a telephone, showing up at my office, showing up at my work. I think that part is important. I think it's reprehensible that people use the system and act like cowards behind a screen because that's exactly what they are. They are cowards behind a screen. And I don't want to live in a world or in a society in which we're cowering and we're retreating because somebody said something vile. I'd much rather let them out themselves so that we can figure out who they are. And if there are rules and laws that they broke, then we can punish those people for doing those stu, those stupid things. But to punish the people that aren't doing that is not something I'm in support of. Counselor?
Claude.
Oh, sorry. I saw the closest hand.
Well, Jay, I really hope... Well, Jay, I really hope this doesn't become a habit, but I fully agree with you.
It's going to be a leave-in. We were rubbing off on each other.
And I'll note that in tonight's meeting, the city clerk is monitoring the Zoom, and she is capable of muting anyone zooming in at any time. And I think one of the problems with the planning board meeting is that the city planner is hosting the meeting and taking notes and doing a bunch of other stuff all at the same time, and can be caught off guard with a rant of some sort before you can find the mute button on the screen. You're monitoring, right, Patty? So if I were to go off on a tirade in here in person, you can't do anything unless Jay comes over and grabs me physically. But when you're zooming, well, you can just mute off. Or getting the email confirmation that before you connect, that's another way that you can monitor. So I think we have a couple of tools that we can use, but still continue to provide access to the public on as wide a basis as possible.
So I think it's important for us to actually look at what our policy is on remote meetings. Members are expected to be physically present, and Zoom participation is only required when there is someone, a counselor or committee member, online. That's what we adopted in June of 2021, and it is, as I recall, it's basically, this is what conforms to the state law on remote meeting, right? So I think that, yes, it's important to provide access. There are other ways that people can access counselors. They can email. If they can't come in physically to a meeting, they can send in a public comment that every person gets. People can certainly watch a streamed video. I think, in this case, I'm in favor of limiting remote participation, except when a counselor, it cannot be here. And because I think this issue isn't, you know, it's happening everywhere, and I think if we don't want it to happen again, then I think we need to take some steps like this.
If I can just, you know, when I've, because I've had conversations with counselors and, you know, and the public about, and in my initial reaction to what happened, I was furious, and I was like, end it all. I don't want, you know, no more Zoom, no more nothing. However, you know, having time to reflect, I think it's important that people are still able to log in online, if there's checks and balances, if we can, you know, do something to make sure that, you know, we kind of know either what they're going to say, or they have to do some email confirmation, whatever they need to do. But I think it's important that people are able to still participate, whether, you know, if they can't be here, and to be able to, you know, communicate with us, you know, if they so choose.
I got a question. Is it required that you have your screen on when you're on Zoom?
No.
In order to participate?
No.
Because that's another requirement that we can add in. In order to participate or even speak, you have to be on camera.
We make people stand there and identify themselves.
Yes, so they would have to do the same online.
I just want to ask for some clarification here. Is the Zoom technology that was used at the planning board meeting the same as what we use?
Yes.
It was. So it was, so anyone can ask to be promoted? They don't have to register ahead of time?
They do have to register ahead of time. So through the Zoom platform, anyone can request to participate, and they provide their name and an email address through Zoom. This individual, I assume, made up some fictitious email. You can make up a Zoom account, you know, or an email account. As I'm sitting here, I can make a new email account. So those aren't vetted, and they don't provide access to an IP address to be able to track those folks. So the promotion from an attendee to a panelist, which is someone who can be seen and heard on Zoom, is an action that I take to either allow, we can either allow a person just to talk with just audio capabilities, or we can promote them with audio and video capabilities, which also provides access as a panelist to share their screen. So if you want to be able to see the person, that gives them full access to the meeting. So it takes a few seconds after I click the buttons to promote the individual, and it takes a few seconds for the individual to be demoted, if you will, back to an attendee. It takes me a few seconds every time I do it to click through the buttons to find how to do that, where the individual is in the list of people, and hit the three buttons, and then, you know, click promote or demote or whatever, because there's a list of actions that I can take. So I will say that it, there will be a period of time, a few seconds, 20, 30, whatever it may be, that that person would have full access to be able to say or show whatever they want. And probably being rattled at that moment, it may take me longer than it normally would. So I've, you know, I've talked about this quite a bit with Brian, and I talked with the mayor today. It's, you know, you're adding a convenience in that service, and it's been utilized over time. It's diminished over time now that COVID is somewhat behind us. But there's a risk with that convenience. So really, we're, you know, we're weighing, is the convenience worth the risk? I will say that, you know, we've, our mindset has changed over time because of COVID, and, you know, I've been around for quite a long time at these types of meetings, and, you know, generally it was when we were meeting in person, if a counselor was not able to attend, they were simply absent. And it's okay to be absent, you know, people have lives and things. So, you know, you might have a six-member council or a five-member council. Obviously, you need five members to conduct a meeting, so that, you know, it's not an issue if a counselor needs to be absent, you know? So we did meetings for hundreds of years in person and, you know, open to the public with participation allowed. So I'll just, you know, my point is that we're at the, you know, the mercy of technology at every meeting, and when the technology fails, I am not an IT person, and everyone is going to look to me as the staff member to fix what's going on. And sometimes that's a lot of responsibility to manage with the other things that are happening in a meeting.
That's our other boards and committees also. It's not just here and Patty. It's planning board, it's housing, we use this, you know, many other boards and committees. So you're putting the responsibility on all of those people. The other thing, again, just to reiterate, is, you know, these offenders from a couple weeks ago did register and goes without process. So...
Chief, if somebody registers, can't we issue like a subpoena or warrant to Zoom to get the IP information? I mean, I would assume that we have that sort of, at least somebody at the department that looks or can look at those sorts of things. I mean, this isn't something that's happening every day. We've been doing this for the last few years, and it's popped up once or twice on us. So it seems like, again, we're going to try to restrict or take access. For me, it's not about the counselors being able to get on. It's not about somebody like Katie being able, it really is about people being able to actively participate in their government from wherever they are.
So we have to have a criminal aspect. And the speech, I watched those videos of the planning board meeting, reviewed them carefully to see if there was a crime, consulted with the deputy district attorney, and, you know, unfortunately, vile as it may be, disgusting as we all think it is, there was not a crime there. Hate speech is very often protected speech for a variety of reasons. And so, you know, it's, again, it's disgusting, and I think we need to call it what it is. I think it's important that you read that proclamation, and I think it's important for all of us to stand up to it when we see it and say that it's not okay. But unfortunately, if there's no crime, there's no process for me to follow through on.
Okay. I mean, that answers it. Again, it's 2023. Technology is not going anywhere. And we cannot run and hide every time somebody does something. That's when they win. When we retreat is exactly when these people win, and that is not okay.
I, so I have participated both here in person and then also remotely through Zoom. And honestly, I have found that, and just through speaking with other citizens, the Zoom aspect is really beneficial for folks to be able to participate, you know, like Jay said. But not just that, it's accessibility, and accessibility beyond just what's convenient. It's accessibility for people who have mobility issues. It's accessibility for people who have transportation issues, who aren't necessarily able to get out here in the evenings, or to be able to stay out, to be able to participate for the full length of a meeting. And, you know, I understand that a lot of times, like, there is the clause in there about, well, if, you know, let's have Zoom as long as a counselor is the one who's not being able to participate. Well, why does it have to just be a counselor? Because, you know, I know I come up here all the time and speak. You guys see my face all the time. And I don't necessarily plan that. It's not necessarily something that I'm going to know to send a note in beforehand or even for afterwards. Like, this right now is impromptu, but it's that, it's so necessary. And it's so necessary for people who have those accessibility issues, the transportation, the mobility, or even immunocompromised, to be able to participate in their government through Zoom. So hopefully, we can figure out the technology piece, because, no, hate speech is not okay, and it's not okay for any venue. But to be able to participate really, really is. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that I was talking about our policy as it currently exists, which we don't really follow, but we could follow it. And that, if we followed the policy that we have, it would mean counselors would be expected to be here and other members. And if they couldn't be, then they could have the Zoom option, and we would have to provide Zoom option for everyone. So just, that's what we have now.
Nancy Sanford, word one again. And Jay, I could not agree with you more. Thank you. I love being able to, whether I'm in Waterville, whether I'm somewhere else, to participate. And I think it's important. It gives us access, more access, and why we would want to go back to pre-COVID accessibility to civil discourse and engagement. I don't see why we would want to do that. And you're right. If we do that, then those vile people that say those vile things win. And so absolutely, when that happens, we need to say it's not okay, but not capitulate to them. So my hope is that we will continue to have remote access, full remote access. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jacob Varoufey. I live over in Winslow. One of the ideas that I just had was, instead of trying to do a blacklist approach where we just play whack-a-mole with skinheads, we do a whitelist approach where we allow people to speak on Zoom, only if they've proven that they have a good reason to be involved in civil discourse in Waterville. Like, say, if they're a resident of the Kennebec County, or if they're a member of permanent organizations like Maine Housing or UHS or something like that.
I'm not a fan of Zoom, but I do agree with you that you should have full access. I just feel as though we should limit the black screens, because, as I already previously said, I was at that planning board meeting, and a subject in New York was in a black screen, okay? He was under a screen of somebody who was actually here. So if you want to speak, great, but you should at least show your face, because we should all feel safe. I'm not a fan of not knowing who's listening to me either, you know? So, I mean, as much as I would love to say, you know, banish Zoom, we should at least have the people on screen, because then we know who's speaking. Because that's a civil rights violation to insult people. You know, you have the right not to be insulted. So can we do anything about it? Probably not. But would the state spend the money to investigate IP addresses? I highly doubt it. So if we could put a stipulation where everybody has to be on screen, that would be a lot safer for everybody. Because then the cowards can't be cowards.
That's handled by the person on the other end, not on my end.
Right, because you can fake email addresses.
Right.
We all have multiple email addresses. You can fake names, but you can't fake a face.
Right, but that video is controlled by the person on the other end, not on my end. So we give them...
And that's what I was, maybe we, you know, if you want to participate in a government, you know, you have to show your face and...
The whitelist idea makes a lot more sense. Instead of having a blacklist, we typically know who's going to be coming to these meetings. And when they're Waterville residents or people from the area, like when Nancy's on, we know it's Nancy. So we don't have to vet Nancy, but if it's somebody who's coming into the room that we've never seen, why, A, I probably wouldn't promote them. That's somebody I would make have to go through, whatever hoop or jump that they need to get through before they can get access to getting, being moved to a panelist. I mean, we do have some tools that we can use. It's not like we're getting 100 requests a week to get on Zoom. And the people that have already gone through the process, like I said, Nancy, we know who she is, she's been to these meetings. If Paula needs to get on, if Anna needs to get on, we know, these are people that have been here before. They're whitelisted.
I would move that we switch to red list and green list personally. The history of white listing and black listing is actually a little bit of a fraught terminology.
I'm good with red and green. Green means go. Red means we can't get on.
Well, but that doesn't address Anna's concern of the, if I'm watching the meeting now and I want to participate, we don't have the ability to vet the person to participate in the meeting in the incident in which they want to participate. So if you want to register and become green-listed, then you need to do so prior to the meeting, but you may not be moved to participate until such time as the meeting...
But that's what you're talking about with this stipulation, is Anna knows that. She can be green-listed far into the future. So the next time she gets into a meeting, even if it's 10 weeks from now, she's already done, been green-listed, we don't have to worry about it. If you're a person that, in that actual moment, who wants to speak, if you haven't been approved to do so, then we're sorry, you're going to have to go through those hoops. That's what we're looking for, checks and balances, to allow people to get on so that we don't end up with these same situations. we don't end up with these same situations.
That just seems discriminatory to me. I don't, is that even legal to say, we know you, so you can speak? I mean, when someone walks in the door here, we may not know them, but they can come to the podium.
But what we can.
I'm just curious what, what our solicitor would say about that.
Chad had, Chad had a suggestion that he made at the end of the planning board meeting, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have the vetting process that's done in some other communities requires name, address, and then a verification of who the person is. And with that process, there have been no problems. Am I correct? That's simple. Don't get into creating categories and cultures and stuff like that. That's a complication that we will not follow. Somebody wants to speak, you register, you can register each time. The fact of the matter is, we don't have, and if all council members are present, we don't have to allow it at all. Zoom is only required for the public if, in fact, there is a, under our policy, which mirrors state law, if, in fact, a counselor is not present. We're allowed to go beyond that if we want to, but we don't have to. And of course, we do because we want the public to be able to participate. You make your best decisions when you have the most information. I should say the most relevant information because that's the problem we have here with that type of interruption. But let's screen the person who wants to speak. That's hardly a great imposition. And with a verification process, I, I think we probably can solve the problem. And that's, that's quite simple. It's the cowards that don't want to be identified.
I think the other issue too, though, is at, like, the planning board level, they don't have a, like, Sam runs the meeting on Zoom, and so she's chairing this meeting and dealing with this and then dealing with this, it becomes cumbersome.
That's why, that's why I never look at this thing.
We would need somebody else to facilitate the moving in and out.
But is that not also at her discretion, right? I mean, the planning board does not need to have the precise same policy as the council does.
Well, a lot of those are public hearings and when they, I mean.
I mean, as long as the planning board is meeting the minimum requirements of our policy and the state policy, right?
Say that again.
If the council so chooses to go beyond the, the minimum requirements imposed by the state, right, that, that's our prerogative. But that doesn't mean that because the council so chooses to exercise that, that it is incumbent upon all of the committees that are doing city business publicly to adhere to that, right? As long as they are meeting the basic requirement of the state, or am I incorrect there?
You're correct.
Yeah, see? So i- if Sam doesn't feel capable of managing that because she's, you know, dealing with multiple things at once in that meeting, as long as, you know, she's giving access to any absent member who is joining by Zoom, and if there are none and she doesn't, she doesn't want to deal with it, then that's entirely her prerogative. Otherwise, the council is free to pursue our policy here, whatever that may be. The fact that I, you know, I took exception to the, you know, the terminology around that, I, that was not to suggest that I actually favor that policy either. I, I do not. I, my perspective is in line with the solicitor. I, I do think that access is extremely important, not just, you know, Ms. Holdenar came up here and was very articulate. There are other groups that were not mentioned, even parents of young children, that maybe they're a single parent and they do not want to take their young child out into, at the city council meeting at what is, you know, can, can run to be late meetings, of course. But they, they want to participate. That's, that's, there's probably a lot of those kinds of people in Waterville. And I would hope that they would be encouraged to participate in, in the civic life. So, yeah, if, if we can come up with, I mean, you know, even, you know, even just stating these kinds of policies that are suggested by, by Chad here, that's going to be a deterrent. That's our, that it's in itself is a deterrent. If they realize that they're going to have to give a name and address and go through some sort of a verification process, I, I would imagine that is going to dramatically curtail this kind of, this kind of event that none of us want.
Anyone else with suggestions? Sounds like you've got a little more work to do.
I say vet them out. I agree with that.
I'm happy to hear that the consensus is to not get rid of it.
Yeah, I agree with not getting rid of it. Because I'm looking even at the planning board, I was online. If it wasn't for that online option, I would not even be enabled to participate.
So just to clarify, there's a distinction between observing and participating, right? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude people observing the meeting in live, live time. You know, I'm, I agree. I mean, it's definitely important to have access. I'd be interested in exploring this other, further level of verification, if that helps. I do think that the biggest deterrent to hate speech is having to come in public and say something to our faces. And it is all too easy to hide behind that screen. And we're not going to be able to make people turn their screens on. So we just have to realize what the, what the trade-offs are here.
But I got a question. So if somebody does come here in public and say the same thing that they said online, they still can't get charged for it because it's a freedom of speech? So.
But they're going to have to stand there and they're ashamed.
They're going to be afraid to get popped in the mouth.
They're not, yeah.
They're not ashamed. It's gross. All right. It's going to require further discussion?
Pre-COVID, what? We had a phone number.
Yeah, we had phone, when we were at the school, we had a phone number where people called.
Was there reverse verification?
No, we were, whoever was on the phone would repeat whatever they were listening to. So the resident would call and say, I have a question about what you're talking about. And the person that picked up the phone would say, they said they have a question about what you're talking about. I mean, it was, and you're right, there is a difference between being able to watch and participate. And I want to restrict, well, I mean, not, not restrict, I want to stop them from being able to say vile. But the problem is that doing anything else will eliminate that participation piece. I want people to, in our community, to be able to participate. Katie was able to get on today because she was able to participate and, and include herself in what was going on. Without that, I didn't even know she was going to be here. Anybody else? I mean, you just don't know. But Katie's one of those people that I guarantee is going to go through the verification process. And if we can make it as stringent as possible, we don't have to make it easy for them to verify, we have to make it stringent so that we know that the people who finally get through the web should be upstanding people that aren't going to say stuff like that. Yeah, I mean, whatever. There's capchas out there.
So as I guess wrapping this up, I mean, just so I think city staff is clear, we're going to investigate further sort of registration and vetting options?
Heck, I mean, I always have to put like my credit card number into stuff to verify who I am. You ding it for the 99 cents and get it right back. I don't know what. What was that?
There is no complete fix.
Yeah, there isn't. But that's it. Because there's no complete fix, retreating is not, is not the answer. That, that's just a way for everybody else to win. No. Won't do that. All right, anything else? A motion to adjourn?